With that, move on to acknowledgements. Say when you have any acknowledgements to see.
I'll say it again. Thank you for the efforts of the staff, but also thank you to Sandwich Police Department, Sandwich Fire Department for supporting all the events on Friday.
Anya?
Aye, thank you. I just wanted to mention, last week Sandwich lost a wonderful woman. Lynell Rodman passed away. Lynell served our community for years during her time on the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee. And she left quite a lasting impression on many people in town. People that knew Lynell could describe her as articulate, compassionate, strong and insightful and caring. Even though she moved out of Sandwich, she had moved to Washington DC a few years ago. She still had so much pride and affection for our town. And she was always up to date on what was happening. She's going to be missed by a lot of people, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much. Any other acknowledgements to see? Okay, moving on to the boards. I'm just making a motion. I'll make a motion and I may put the board's agenda. Motion by Kevin, second by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, extensions. Motion passes six zero, we will extend. Meeting minutes. I'll make a motion and I may approve the meetings. The minutes of our regular business meeting dated January 11th, 2023 is presented. Motion by Kevin, second by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, seven zero. New business. Kick back over to you.
Sure. This would be a few things that came out of our last meeting a week ago. That you have, believe in your packet, the version three of the budget document. I think there was a request to take all of the years of data of Sandwich High School and the former STEM Academy and put them together so you can kind of see the progression of salaries and expenditures. So if you go to page 22, they're there. I think also a recommendation or suggestion was with respect to athletics budget, to actually explicitly show the lesser amount taken out in use of the athletic user fees. There's like eight receipts, so if you go to page 33, you can see that notation. And then what I showed at the last meeting, comparative data, the DART data from the district analysis and review tool, kind of showing the financial comparative data of us versus all of the districts on the key. So it's towards the end of the document on pages 34 and 35. So that is a piece that came up. I also wanted to address with everyone, and I know Kevin has brought up this concern time and again, but I think it's a very legitimate concern over cutting ourselves short, so to speak, with regard to budgeting 35% with regard to the increase in utilities. Kind of saying, where would we be if we went a little higher, say a point such as 40%? So myself and Michelle ran the numbers today, and 40% increase would increase our overall increase from 3.52% to 3.69%. And the increase to the town would go from 3.8% to 4.09%, just for the sake of consideration.
Question on that effect, good. So were we to assume that 40%, we line item budget that for utilities? It comes in at 35%. Are we able to basically, you know, compartmentalize that so that assuming it stays at 35 without the 40, it would literally be excess and again, back to the fact that it could stay there as opposed to being made?
They're in segregated, um...
Correct. I kind of knew that, but I just wanted...
It's quiet. I've got 11 minutes to kill before the public hearing, so I won't talk for 11 minutes. Based on, you know, Don, the last question, Michelle explained it. I would support the idea of, I would much rather be cautious of the term. Good phrase when you're talking about river. I think that it's a reasonably anticipated expense. I'll play. That I would rather budget for, I hate to say worst case, but then hopefully be pleasantly surprised and then we can get money back to the town. By six months from now, or nine months from now, having to go back either to the town or force the superintendent to look where he's going to cut elsewhere in this budget that could impact learning, to literally keep lights on. So we're not going to go yet, but we can, I would support going to the 40%, especially if we don't use it, we get it back to the town.
And I think in fairness, when you say worst case scenario, it's actually not worst case scenario. Projection of 30 to 50%, 40% is cutting right down the middle. Hopefully it's better, and maybe not the first part of the year because I don't think there's any anticipation of the first part of the year will be better, but maybe give it a little out and come back to the norm some. But it really is taking the average of what the anticipated, or projections are.
As long as it's been fine so far, doesn't mean it's going to continue to be, nor does it mean next year will be.
What is the town budgeting? Do you have any idea?
Little James initially told me he was going to budget 40%.
Yes, okay, so there we go.
I'm looking at the river. So I too would support the idea of changing from 35 to 40%, thus the difference of a 3.88% to 4.09% increase. Again, simply based on the fact that it's reasonable with respect to those are going to be our costs. It's right in line, give or take, with what the town's budgeting, with what the anticipated ask from the school will be. If we don't use it, we don't use it. But I think, I think it's smart, and I don't think it's an overreach either. It's not like we're saying, we anticipate things above 100%. We're asking to enhance several programs that we didn't have last year because, hey, money grows on trees. This is, my gas bill is outrageous right now, and so is everybody else's, and that's what we're looking at. So, anyway. Anybody else have anything else on that before we talk about the contract?
Utilities and pools, such a pleasant topic to see there. Looking for January. I had the opportunity since our last meeting and since the last public comment to sit down and have a conversation with Trish Kardif, who is the owner and operator of Aqua Safe. I'm sure most of you know her because she's been in town for a long time and over the last seven years has been the primary person kind of running the pool operations for us. It turns out, and I think there's a conception out there that somehow we are not having any hours whatsoever for adult swim or for laps or anything like that. And it turns out that that's not true, however, it is, unfortunately, it's very, very limited. Right now, the adult swim hours are three days a week. They are Tuesday, Thursday and Friday from 5:15 to 6:30. There are sometimes family swim hours on Saturdays from what I can ascertain. It is one Saturday a month, usually something like 8:30 to 11:30.
There's no dot between?
Yeah. It's sandwichk12.org, correct? That's what happens when you turn on your show. So if you go to our website and you go to swim program, it is automatically a link to Trish's company, to Aqua Safe. And if you go to Sandwich Schedules and Info, lo and behold, that's where you see sessions and realize you see after-school sessions and for the most part, these are classes that she runs. She has shared that overwhelmingly, these are Sandwich children that access these. And she said she right now in total has about 260 kids in the program with another 130 on the waitlist. When you go to Masters Athletic Swim, that's where you can see the schedule for lap swim. And again, you can see lap 15 to 6:30. So I know that this has been an ongoing issue for quite some time. I think it's very much a political issue as well. I think that there's quite a tentative, a lot of water under the bridge swimspeak, water under the pool. But I think there really, you know, when I shared with you the contract that the district has had in place with Aqua Safe, the contract has lapsed. So right now, it's kind of at will, so to speak. I think, I see this as an opportunity, but I feel like there needs to be a dialogue maybe between the school committee and our select board or from the district and the town to kind of get a better sense of what exactly is the ask, so to speak. Now, I understand the frustration that why isn't there more hours with respect to, you know, having adult swim or, you know, it's my understanding in talking to Trish students to be, you know, aqua aerobics that was very successful and so on. You realize you can't go back to where we were 15 or 20 years ago, where it's my understanding that there was community used during the school day. I think what I've heard anecdotally is that it led to problems where you had adults from the community using locker rooms and so on. So I think there's privacy issues here and, you know, we need to protect our students. But I also understand the flip side of trying to figure out a schedule that could work for everyone. And speaking to Trish today, I think like everything else, you can't hide people. You know, she talks quite a bit at how difficult it is to find swim instructors or somebody to facilitate the work and so on, that this isn't exactly a business that, you know, I think it's been very, very challenging for her and I can empathize her perspective as well. But again, I go back to thinking about this, and if this is going to look different from having Aqua Safe moving forward, or whether we go forward with them or not, I think we've got to nail down what exactly is being asked for as far as hours and what's the vision moving forward. I can't answer that question. And I think we've got to open dialogue to get a little more information.
I think the other constituency that might be at the table when or if this discussion takes place is the staff and stakeholders of the Center for Active Living. And I raised the issue originally because with COVID, I kind of lost track of it. And that was the deal at the time, and that's fine. But I'd also be interested to see, particularly as the district or whoever does the contract negotiations for renewal, look at their profit and loss and what our proportion of that is. They've got a setting that's there to which we provide the maintenance. Granted, proportionately, they reimburse for their use of chemicals and damage and that sort of thing. And it may be the best deal, but I think this is an opportunity to talk to the stakeholders and before the contract that's been negotiated, to see how we can flesh.
And realize too...
Just, sorry, pause the conversation because we technically should have a public hearing right at 6:30. So pause full discussion, pick it back up on the other side. Try to stick to my agenda. I do believe we need to vote to open up the public hearings, this one will make a motion.
I will make a motion and then we'll open the public hearing to discuss the FY '24 budget.
Motion by Kevin, second by Sue, all those in favor? I agree. Motion passes unanimously. So we are now in the public budget hearing portion of the agenda. It's different from public forum. There is no time limit, you know, you can't address. This is the opportunity to come up and ask questions, make comments about budget that has been presented. Anyone wishing to do so can approach the mic next to Christine, and we welcome your comments or questions.
Thank you. My name is Mr. Russ Dusso, we're at King Long Hill, and I'm just up here because I understand that there's a commitment to level funding and I actually wish that we weren't doing level funding and that we were cutting. There's been 21 straight months of income drop in the economy and Sandwich has a lot of retirees and retirees are on fixed incomes. And when the schools decide to do level funding, do business as usual, then it makes it more difficult or vulnerable in our communities to actually pay those bills. And in fact, level funding is an exclusive policy when I think that Sandwich ought to be concentrated on being an inclusive community and recognizing that dropping people out of Sandwich because of the cost of living is in fact the opposite of the direction that I think that we should be going, where cutting services would be inclusive, it would be acknowledging the fixed incomes and the stresses of living in an economy like the one that we're undergoing right now. At home, there's a lot of people that are lowering the thermostat and are putting on sweaters and are foregoing all kinds of things that we typically spend money on. And I think that the schools should be looking at what is legally required and activities that are not legally required and should be examining how the school system can tighten its belt in order to help preserve the inclusivity and looking up for the interests of all of our citizens and not just the rich ones. Thank you.
As we are able to come in here, do you like coming to the interview?
Russ, if you were, I believe you press it in every single meeting. First of all, I want to make the point that there's a difference between level funding and level services. What this was put forward was level services, but also recognizing the drop of enrollment. And when I made the initial budget presentation on January 4th, I was very explicit in saying that we will have staffing that's commensurate with our enrollment decrease. And I actually specifically cited over $676,000 in cuts. Secondly, per our discussion just 10 minutes ago, the overwhelming drivers of any increase are two major factors that are beyond the scope of our control. First and foremost, projected, oh, the nearly $600,000 increase in utilities. Secondly, the out-of-district tuitions for students with our most significant needs, an increase of $707,000, just to make those two specific points.
Which is deeply... Go ahead, Berb. Have you identified the way the cuts are going to be in that $676,000?
Not specifically yet, no. But we're, one of the things, and I believe you brought this point up earlier, Berb, and I know this was part of our conversation the last two weeks, is in doing that and being explicit and transparent about it, we're going to be in company meetings talking specifically around targets for class sizes, looking at first and foremost, early childhood at Forestale, upper elementary at Oak Ridge, and then generally speaking at the middle high school.
So you don't know where the cut's going to be, but you know the $676,000, so I'm having trouble understanding how you're going to even cut $676,000 without knowing where they're going to be?
Because they were projected, projected areas when you're looking at specific grade levels and specific areas when you look at how students will be matriculated.
So you have an idea where they're going to be?
Correct.
You have an idea where they're going to be, but you're, you will be talking to the committee to kind of help identify exactly where they're going to be.
Correct. Correct.
But actually, to clarify, the committee has no say whatsoever in where staff cuts are paid. We approve the budget and running the function of the school is solely in the hands of the superintendent and the administrators. So it will be on our purview to discuss where cuts are made to specific positions. Well, was there some advice and consent in that situation?
I think it is, let me bridge. I agree with Don in that it is the purview of our administrative...
That's what we hired for.
However, I think for the sake of transparency and letting our community, letting our parents know exactly what programming will look like for the '23-'24 school year, it bears well for us to have a very public and open conversation about that.
As far as the out-of-district placements and how those will be paid for, there is a complicated, or maybe it's not so complicated, but there is a formula under the heading of Circuit Breaker.
Correct, reimbursement.
That reimburses the town, and I do know from the MAS C listener that MAS C is working very hard to get that from, what is it, 75% of whatever to 90%. So that will help, but these are still mandates that are necessary to meet the needs of the students.
Correct. What's basically been shared through the Superintendents Association is go from 75 to 90 and, you know, shoot for 90, if you get 80, accept the win. However, and I'm sure as you know and various committee members know, Circuit Breaker reimbursement is always one year and careers. So even if we have a legislative win, we won't realize that additional reimbursement until FY '25.
So if we don't have it, the town through reserves covers it? And the schools would reimburse the town that were delivered back to the town? Is that what you have, or special like reserve fund? Right, so those tuitions still have to be paid at a 14% raise when they buy the commonwealth.
Unless they do something where they bring the money in in the current school year or bring it in during the FY '24 school year, it's going to be a wait and see how much we get. And we'll like, hey, and then if we run out of money, which I don't think we would because I have some additional circuit breaker, I always kind of calculated and like always leave a little leftover for the next year. So we should squeak by, but what is the end of this? Because there's always more kids that could come in.
And just to that point, in fairness, as discussed previously, this is really early in the state budgetary process to do all of this because there are so many unknowns. But we're stuck, we have to provide this budget to the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee by the end of this month, February 1st, whenever it is, so that it can be approved in time before town meeting. So there are a lot of unknowns. So it's best projections, it's year over year, looking at where these things are going. Listen to the information, but we can only work with what we have at this time. And the school, the selectmen can adjust our budget. Is that... They can't touch it. They can, they cannot prove it, they cannot support it. So we approve our budget this evening, next week, whenever it is, we'll vote on it. It goes to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectment. They vote to either approve or support or not support our budget. If it's not supported, which has happened in the past, and comes back to us and we can choose to adjust it or stick with it, and at that point, it goes to town meeting. It doesn't go back to the selectmen? Well, we can send it back, we can choose not to send it back. We could, in theory, and I would not want this to be the case, but in theory, we could send a budget to town meeting that has not been supported by the Board of Selectment or the Finance Committee and ask the town to approve it. I don't think it's our best move. It would be nice to have that support, but there's no legal obligation for them to support the budget. Our job here is to provide as much information as we possibly can to try to get those boards behind our budget. But legally speaking, or technically speaking, no, they don't have to approve. They don't have approval power. But it would be nice if they supported it, so. So we're still in public hearings, anyone else who wants to come up? Any other comments before that? Is this still the public budget hearings or anyone else that wishes to come up? And again, you can ask questions, so one time we're actually allowed to answer something or respond.
I'm Ryan Lennon, Three Greens Word Circle. This is just off of the last, kind of a follow-up question, if you will. If you guys, if you approve the budget, you have the power to approve the budget, would it not make more sense to have the business fiscal meetings in the fiscal new year in March or April? Doctor last week on January 4th mentioned that his old school district, the budget was due in March.
So it would make more sense? It's a town charter requirement.
So you guys are going to change that, Sean? You don't have the power to change that? We don't have it, because right now it seems like there's a lot of speculation, I'm guessing. And it's totally agree to have a budget with those numbers in better in March or April as opposed to...
You're 100% right, and then would make more sense, the town charter requires that the school committee send an approved vote upon budget from here to the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee, is it February 1st? By February 1st, so that there's time for them to go through it, approve and that, whatever, prior to town meeting, which is the first, Wednesday, first something in May, which is here...
Monday.
May 1st, it's May 1st this year, which puts us even tighter. So yes, you're 100% right, it would be better to push this off a little while to have better information, but our hands are tied. I don't want to carry on further than that.
I don't, I don't have a second question, I just have a comment, it's actually a comment for Mr. Fisher. All of your chats, your time's appreciated for what you do, but I noticed that you were the first person to notice that the numbers you had in front of you at the budget meeting weren't up-to-date numbers. And you, you, I just want to say, I appreciate you guys, your time and the attention to detail you pay to this stuff and making sure this town ultimately is a, you know, even though we just don't know, it's not necessarily a democracy, your value and input is needed for the budget and all the things that go off.
All right, sir, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
You said, even though it's a democracy, what did you mean by that?
Uh, Paul, that's the thing that was said. We're in front of my.
I don't have the authority to decide what cuts.
Yeah, because I have no say.
Over which cuts are made?
Well, no say.
Paul, if I could just clarify that. Some of that is master of law talks about like, the duties of the school committee are primarily threefold. Hire a superintendent, approve a budget, and set policy, that's by national law. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure that's it.
Correct.
The one thing I'm confident, it sounds like you've been watching, which is great, I hope for others' own. I'll speak for myself here, I have confidence in the superintendent, we'll be transparent in the process. And it's, to a certain extent, it's no different than the town side. The selectmen approve a budget, and it's the town manager that's, you know, considering the selectmen and board of directors, the town manager has the authority to execute. It's essentially the CEO, for lack of a better term, we don't like to use that analogy. And that's just the way it works, because none of us here are professional educators or maybe to a certain extent, with the exception of the two to my left.
And Christine.
Oh, I'm sorry. But we're not in a day-to-day, and so we do need to trust them to actually execute. The, where democracy does come into play is we vote on, and then ultimately, it's town meeting that says yes or no. So I just offer that up as a comment. But no, thank you for coming, I very much appreciate it.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak at the public budget hearing portion of the meeting?
Seeing non-allegable motion, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Motion by Kevin, signed by Mike, all is in favor. Aye. Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero, we have closed the public budget hearing portion of the meeting. I can jump back. We'll jump back for the pool, I'll give you a jump out at the end of the time. Carol, what are your thoughts, Kevin? Sorry. So again, Sue, did you have anything further on that? Okay, and I think we're all in agreement that it's, it has, it has come up, and I think to Mr. Sampson's point, the last times we brought up in the past, the town has supported when money's been needed to fix the pool, to pay for everything involved in the pool. So it should have more of a use for the community. But as a factor, is figuring out how that's achieved, and what exactly, as you said, what that asks. So you think that the idea that we reach out to the Board of Selectment to see, you know, what their thoughts are, we can reach out to them as well?
Sure.
Whatever we can, whatever we can gain or how, we can support that as a committee.
Sure.
You know, I mean, I think it's, as you stated, I think it's unreasonable to expect that the pool would ever be accessible during school hours. I think that should assail at this point in the times we live in where, you know, no one is supposed to get into that school outside of those that are modelized to be there. And it's just, even with changes to the physical nature of it, it just doesn't make sense to allow additional people into the building. But there's a lot of hours that schools not use, and, you know, if we're seeing here, maybe not all of that's being utilized as best it could be. I'm not the one to figure that out, but I'm happy to help figure out what those uses are and how we help support that, so I think that's the goal here.
Yeah, I agree, I think, as we go forward, explore what those opportunities are and what is within the realm of the possible. It's just having, like, an open swim on a Saturday morning after staff. And it comes to the costs, it's the fees, things like that. Mentioned center of active learning, there'd be a department role there, you know. I don't think the direct department wants this to a certain extent, you know.
Yeah, and I do think you're getting at the key point about ownership.
Right.
I know since the community school shut down, it's been a little bit of, I don't know if I would call it political football, but kind of this back and forth about who takes ownership of this. I can tell you that there isn't a lot of trish rendits and acquiesces out there. And even if we were to do, okay, we've got an open contract to do an RFP, I don't think you're going to find a lot of people on the Cape that would bid on something like this. So I think owning it and who's going to take ownership of this is going to be a huge piece.
Right, I think this is more a passion, I don't love her than anything else, and when we talk about community access, it should not be lost. I pick up the number of kids that are taking swimming lessons, zero sixteen, two sixteen. And I'm willing to bet probably ninety percent of them are within the comp five to six. So, you know, there is, there is community access for a lot of our kids, so I applaud you for digging into this in such a short, you know, a busy week with everything else, and I look forward to hearing it, but I, we need to also kind of measure our expectations of what is in the realm of possible, so.
And by the same token, the entire community needs to understand clearly what those expectations and parameters are. And I think of the last number of years, somewhere, that's about the loss. And how try bringing a little time, is the time to clarify all some expectations.
Thanks for going, thanks for your work on it.
Sure.
All right, anything additional on?
I just got a question, the pool, we have a subcommittee for the pool, don't they? On the subcommittee, don't we used to? I thought we were reading back in the subcommittees that we have one. Didn't that mean we could have a meeting with that, with the go-to person, and trish kind of, when it's time to negotiate that? Isn't there a subcommittee on the pool?
Yeah, I think there may have been in the past a separate subcommittee, but they'd probably flood their facilities at this point. But, you know, let's. Yep. So let's, but let's try to get some more feedback on what we as a committee can do to help sort the reasonable thing out. But it's not following that here, it's just the point of that, that it's been brought up. All right. We're just an old business, so our only other item under old business is the discussion and potential vote on proposed fiscal year twenty-four budget. So we've had a couple meetings now, there's been a lot of questions, information received, additional information exceedingly. Now's the time, anyone still has questions, has comments, has any of that, to bring those up now, and then potentially, beyond that, if there was some commotion, we can do something. Sue?
Just a question, let's say the committee votes to approve it tonight, and between now and the final day, where the warrant has to be printed, you get information that's significant, you can revisit that and modify it accordingly.
My understanding is you can always go down, you cannot go up.
Correct. So.
My understanding is the same, we could amend the request. Should we find out that that's seventy-five to ninety percent between now and town meeting approved, an amendment could be placed that the original ask of X has been reduced to this, that is possible. But as Joe stated, you can't say, oh, we just found out that some extra expenses, we need more money, like, after we approve it, we're not allowed to ask for more.
So is there any, well, prior to the rest of our statement? Something happened the next week, we could, we could be, you know.
To, to, to just address, but yeah, but after, after it's sent to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectment, the only thing we can do is amend and reduce the requested budget.
So in that case, given all the information, the answer to your satisfaction?
Burr, will you have anything?
I do know.
If I saw you press your mic.
I am very well to approve it, but I have, it's not a lot really to be asked about it. I do understand the concerns of the members of the public that spoke this evening. But to vote against it, I think would be going too far, and to take a no standing is even worse because, you know, we've been, we've worked on this quite a bit, so I wouldn't be abstaining, but that, I just want to express that, I understand members of the public that spoke, and I get it, I did get it, but I understand the tax situation and this, you know, how things, how things are, and particularly among some senior citizens that are living on a, they're living on a low-funded budget, in a sense, because there is an increase in social security, but social security doesn't do it for many most people.
Just a comment, thank you, Joe, Michelle, for sorting through those questions. I appreciate the three and a half pages that were my questions. And I just hope that people, members of the community have an opportunity to view those as well, and look at the questions, and that they, that the committee did ask information that was provided. So I think that's very helpful and helping us. More marketing news, thank you.
I kind of touched on earlier, superintendent mentioned, talked a bit about the public hearing about, I'd feel much more comfortable, I don't like it. I got my textbook too, much rather than we go forward with the forty percent for utilities than thirty-five, realizing that if we don't do it, we can give it back to taxpayers if we don't need it. But I'd much rather prepare for that, plan for that, than find that we have to make cuts that are going to impact our students. So I think, did you say that the town itself, rest of the town budget, is roughly around four percent? It's kind of what Don was targeting us?
Correct.
So we are consistent, you know, forty percent in utilities is consistent with the town, or four percent is consistent with the town. I'm not thrilled about it, it's, I don't know, given the mandatory, the cost increases that are beyond our control, I don't know how we would go forward without a negative impact on our students. So, if no one has anything else, I'll make a motion that we approve our FY twenty-four budget as the superintendent has presented at the Cady app that we go forward with a forty percent increase in utility expenses, or is it thirty-five, or is it actually in the book?
Hey, motion by Kevin, signed by Mike, still time for discussion.
Okay, so if you approve the budget, and I don't approve what we do, I don't want to up the budget anymore for any reason. So if you, are we going to have a second vote to approve the budget yet?
No, so the motion right now is to approve the budget at the, with the forty percent increase on utilities.
But that forty percent was not in the budget, correct?
No, but that's the motion.
In the budget, it's thirty-five, correct?
So if you prefer, we can, just to make it clean, let's make a motion to approve the budget request, as a first vote. I don't think any need to.
Put those motions on table, that's, I'm not trying to order them from a rules standpoint. Okay, I'll, sure, clarification, I'll throw a motion, but I'm not sure.
I think it's not necessary, but I just want to make it clean that, so I'll make a motion that we change the proposed budget to change from thirty-five percent to forty percent projected increase on utilities. Second.
We're going to have it.
Okay. Motion by me, signed by Sue, any further discussion?
Can I add something, hopefully will gain a little clarity? What you have for you in the budget book has a increase that you would be, in the budget book, it is thirty-eight, a budget of thirty-eight billion, two hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Okay, as I stated before, that's an overall increase of three point five two percent, which translates to one million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six. If you were to go forward with the motion that you just made with regard to a three point six nine percent increase, you'd be voting for a budget of thirty-eight million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. That's an increase of one million, three hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and six dollars. So realize that total increase going from the thirty-five percent to the forty percent, you're voting on an additional sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Okay, so from the budget going from three point five two percent to three point six nine percent increase, that's an additional sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Hope that adds a little clarity.
It does.
So, my motion, signed by Sue, any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye. All is closed, motion passes six to one. Another motion.
I forgot to word this. What would that toll be?
You know what, I have written down, so I'm going to make the motion again.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the budget, thirty-eight million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and two dollars for an increase of one million, three hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and six dollars, representing a three point six nine percent increase and a four point oh nine percent increase overall to the town. Did you get it right?
Those are after your numbers?
So. Motion by myself, signed by Kevin, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero. All right. Moving on to PTA, PTSA, Special Education Act, School Council, Board of Selectment report. Anyone have anything this evening? All right, these are advisory committee reports. Other topics that recently anticipated, and yes, Jill, mine are really quick, but just dates of meetings. Tonight is a more anticipated. Technically, we're supposed to have a meeting next week, but really that's just a budget meeting placeholder, which is no longer necessary. We do not have a meeting scheduled for the first, we do have on the eighth, but the first would actually be warrants. Otherwise, we're skipping two weeks, coming back for a week, we'd have to be warranting the off week, and it would just be a mess. So I would propose, if it's all right with everyone else, that we cancel next week's meeting, cancel the meeting on the eighth, and instead have a meeting on the first, because it keeps us in line with the warrants. We then get messed up again, due to the February vacation, but that's inevitable, but then we're back on correct cycle after that. Does that make sense to everybody? All right, so we'll get that out there, we will properly do everything that we can, we'll cancel next week, we'll be on for the first, cancel the meeting, and then we'll resume our regular scheduled meetings. All right. Trying to keep things clear as well.
Just one meeting at that, Burr?
Yes, we only had one meeting, because it would be the first and then the fifteenth, but the fifteenth is, we, no, actually, no, so we technically should schedule the first and the fifteenth. So good catch, Christine. I'll hit the email out to everybody, and then we'll repost this and get it out to everyone, but that would be my suggestion, is that we cancel next week, cancel the eighth, go to the first and the fifteenth, to stay on the warrant cycle.
Notice, you still need to double-check that what we have as a published calendar.
Yes, we can amend that, because that's, all right. Okay, so. Bring us to our second public forum meeting, anyone wishing to speak at public forum? Reminder for public forum, sign in, state the name and address for the record, and comments are limited to three max.
Hi, Trish Hill, East Sandwich, and the principal of the Oak Ridge School, and I just wanted to remind you that next week we have the Great Kindness Challenge, and we'd like to invite all of you to the kind. and we'd like to invite all of you to the Kindness Talk on Monday, the 23rd, and we get together about 7:45, so we'd love to have all of you there to start the day off great, and I guarantee you it'll be the best part of your day. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak at public forum this evening? Seeing none, and now it's supposed to be closing bars, anyone have anything this evening?
I still took my thunder, so I'll get that.
Seeing none, no others who want to make a motion, so you can give a best one.
I will make a motion that we adjourn to our next scheduled meeting, which will be February 1st at 6:00 AM right here in Sandwich Town Hall.
Motion by Kevin, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
I think we adjourn until, as I stated, February 1st. We will cancel next week's meeting, and if you all, I'll be back.